You ready? Okay.
Ready.
Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Conos.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Ms. McCready.
Here.
Mr. McQueen.
Here.
Mr. O'Day.
Here.
Ms. Mara.
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnardsville News, the Courier-News, and the Star Ledger, filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020. Pledge of allegiance. You just stand and I have a flag. Let me find my flag. There you go.
I have one on my front porch.
I do as well.
I got one. That's what I'm looking.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do not have any presentations tonight. Approval of minutes. We have three, February 24th, March 2nd, and March 9th. Would someone like to move them?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. At this point in the meeting, I think we can open to members of the public if they have questions or statements they'd like to make. We limit the comments to three minutes. If you have something prepared, you can email it to Anthony for the record. Would anyone like to be heard from the public? Nope. Okay, I will close the public session. I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1839, appropriating the sum of $75,000 for the purchase and installation of library doors. Would anyone like to be heard on this ordinance?
I did get an email from Leslie Gervais saying it could be lowered to $66,000. I don't know whether that's...
So, the reason is that through the course of doing this, they have a quote from the... That was provided to us by the library, and the quote had a range on it. I think the top of the range was $66,000 or something along those lines. Leslie checked on that for us today, correct Ralph?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, you know, if we wanted to cut this right down to the dollar, we could go with $66,000, but that would leave us no room, you know, if there was, you know, the actual price when the work got started came in slightly higher. Now, 50% of this money, under any circumstances, 50% of this money would be coming from a grant from the state of New Jersey, and if the grant, for any reason, is not granted, then we wouldn't do the project at all. That's the understanding we communicated with the library as well. So, the situation is we can go forward with the amount that's written tonight, or we could push this off for two weeks and go with the lower amount, but we would be cutting it to the dollar, you know, from what their estimate is.
Well, actually, we are matching the grant, so we give 75, and then we get a grant for 75. Is that how?
No, we need, in order to do this process, we actually have to come up with all the money in the beginning, and then we'll be reimbursed for half the money at the end.
Thank you.
By the way, the grant application deadline was extended, obviously, with all the events going on.
So, if the council doesn't object, we could go forward this amount now, give us a little bit of buffer, which means at the end of the project, we'd probably recoup some of the funds. Or, you know, if we want to, you know, we could push this off for two weeks and do it with a number, you know, closer to the, to the exact figure in the original estimate.
Okay, we were still...
Chad, I see you talking, but you're on mute.
We're... We're still in the public hearing section, so if no one else, no one from the public has a comment, I'll close the public hearing.
Maybe, Mary Jean, you want to inform the public how to raise their hand so that we know if somebody wants to speak?
I think, well, some of them are phoned and not, I don't know.
Yeah, but if they go, so if you just go to look at the participants, then you will see a raise hand button if you'd like to speak from the public.
Anybody? I don't see any raised hands. Okay. So, I will close the public hearing. Jeff, you're the library liaison.
Yes, I am.
Would, would you like to...
Would you like to move this? Oh, yes, of course. Thank you. So, let's see here. I moved the pass ordinance to 2020-1839 on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Chad, I saw you say yes, but I can't hear you. Can anybody else hear Chad?
No.
Is he muted?
No, still can't hear you, Chad.
He doesn't appear to be muted.
He's giving the thumbs up, so I guess that's a yes.
That's a yes. Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Mara?
Yes. Maybe it's your headphones.
Yeah, sometimes there's double mute on the laptop and on the, and in Zoom directly.
Yeah, I think John Donahue had that trouble during the trial with his headphones.
Here's my first run of the gaming headset, so I'm learning about it.
Okay. All right. Moving on, we have resolutions 2098 through 2011. Any that you want to take off the list or discuss separately?
Tom, did you want to walk just through 100, just kind of walk through that once before we vote on it?
I'd like to pull 111.
Sure, I'll walk through it, John, to answer your question. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I have a question about 109. I don't want to pull it. I just have a clarification I want to ask.
Leslie requested that, and it's purely so that we can use the funds for this crisis. They allowed the funds called...
The Storm Removal Recovery Trust. Yes.
We're just changing the name of ours, so we qualify to use those funds for the coronavirus.
Well, that actually was going to be my question to make sure that we're actually doing it, because that was available to us. Yes, okay.
So, I'm unclear then, what, how does Storm Recovery Trust, how does that allow us to use the money for coronavirus?
Well, according to Leslie, the state issued a guideline that said you could use Storm Recovery Trust money for this incident.
Thanks, that makes sense.
It's a poor choice of words. They should have called it Emergency Recovery, but they, they didn't, but it falls under that umbrella.
How much is in the trust remains from the snow?
$80,000.
Oh, good.
Okay. Any other, any other ones to pull or questions on?
Well, I'm going to speak to 20-100 if there's no questions on other ones.
I can also speak to 106, the change orders for the library roof and HVAC unit, but the details are in the, if anyone has questions, we talked about it at Public Works.
Okay. Tom, you want to go over that?
So, John Donahue and I spoke before the meeting and just said, you know, it might be helpful to just run through the, one, two, three, four, the six items that make up the refunding bond anticipation notes this year. So, this happens every year in, I think it's April, Ralph?
Yes, that's correct.
So, every year in April, we have to take any outstanding bond anticipation notes that previously existed, and then if there's any new bond anticipation notes, we would combine those, and we'd go out to refinance them, or require to refinance them each year. But we want to bundle them together, so if we have any new ones, we bundle them with the old ones to try and get the best rate possible. On this list are two items that preexisted any of these discussions. Those are the first two, 181760 and 191797. So, those existed from 2018 and 2019. The other one, 2019 items were approved in 2019, but the, the funds were not actually drawn on. Is that right, Ralph?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then the two 2020 items are the things that we discussed and voted on in our last meeting, which are the road improvement, the final amount of the original $10 million road referendum monies, and some general capital equipment for the amount of $190,000.
So, just to be clear, so Section 5 and Section 6 are the only new capital?
Section 5 and Section 6.
You have the spreadsheet. Are you looking at the spreadsheet?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at the actual, at the details.
So, 20, so 201836 and 201837 are the new items that we voted on about two weeks ago?
Okay, yep, that's what I got here.
But 191816 and 191827, which were actually voted on in 2019, we actually didn't draw the bond money yet. We just approved them back then, so these are, this is the first time they're going to bond.
Okay.
The other thing that's worth discussing is that 191816, we view that and have from the beginning as just a temporary funding mechanism until we subdivide and sell off the portions of 271 Mine Brook that have public interest, that there's public interest in purchasing some of that land. We, we could not subdivide it if we bought it straight up with open space dollars. So, this is a temporary step where we would buy it with these bond dollars and subdivide the property, which would be legally allowed for us to do, sell off those pieces that are of interest to the general public, and then purchase the remaining with open space dollars. Thus, this particular borrowing, 1.472, would eventually be refunded to the, we think, within 12 months, refunded to the borough through a combination of sales to the general public and monies that would come from the open space trust fund.
I'm assuming that, so I know that when I've asked this question before, there have been bonds that could not be prepaid early. This bond can be prepaid when we have the funds?
Ralph?
This is a bond anticipation note, Chad, and that this is what we roll over from year to year. It's not permanent financing.
So, we can pay it off at any time.
At any time, that is correct.
All right.
That is correct.
And so, this, this was specifically the 271 Mine Brook was... The approach we took was just to give us the flexibility to subdivide and sell off portions of the property. It's not anticipated that we would maintain this, this financing, this bond anticipation note. We hope to clear it before next, this time next year.
Okay, and I know this is a bit rhetorical, but I know this, this is all counted in the fiscal year budget that's being reworked. I know that all these numbers are there, right?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, any other items to pull off or questions?
Yeah, I had a couple. Sorry, I got my mic working here again. 2107, in, in the budget, there's $8,000 to water trees. Is that something that the DPW can do? Especially maybe now that, in today's environment?
It's planting, it's not watering.
Oh, in that budget, there's $8,000, it's like, it's almost 30% of the budget is a watering budget.
That, if I can, I can help you with that, Chad. That is to water the hanging plants throughout the...
I see.
The garden club, I believe it was the garden club.
Friends of Greener Burnsville.
Or Greener Burnsville was doing that, but they, they ran out of funds. So, in order, in order to continue that program, they asked us to pick it up, so we do.
But to be clear, that the funding for this is not coming out of any borough budget, it's coming out of the Shade Tree Fund, right?
If this, I don't have the backup of...
I don't think so.
Ordinance, but...
Yeah, I mean, it says adequate funds are available in the Shade Tree Trust Fund account number here.
Okay, then, yes, then that's where it comes in.
Planting, though. This is our 202 planting that the Shade Tree Commission put together, that whole plan.
Yeah, and that's what's a bit unclear, unclear, Mary Jean. It says that, you know, Route 202 tree planting between Meadowbrook Farm and Old Quarry Road. And then there's a whole list of budgets. It's a total budget of 29,000, of which 8,736 is for watering.
Yeah, that's not the hanging baskets. That's watering the new trees they're planting.
Yeah, that's the key, that's the key us from losing the plantings that we have.
Okay. But I guess the question then comes back to you, Ralph, which is, can our borough staff do that and do it for less? Is that...
Yeah. It just seemed like a lot of money for, for watering, but I just said that a bit ignorantly, not knowing what watering costs.
I don't think we have a watering tank, do we?
No, we don't. We don't have a tank for such a thing, no. Just, well, I don't know, do we have to do that this evening, Mayor, or can we, can we look into that?
Because the next question I would have is, if we don't have the tank to do it, then how are we doing the hanging baskets? I thought the Friends of Greener Burnsville offered us the equipment.
They contracted.
They hire a person.
Yeah, they, yeah, they...
No, I'm pretty sure they own the equipment.
Oh, they contract?
They, they, they contract the person to do the labor, but they actually purchased the equipment. They, Friends of Greener Burnsville own the equipment.
Oh.
That's my understanding. I shouldn't, I shouldn't say that so definitively. That's my clear understanding. My understanding could be wrong. Let's, let's see, if we have two weeks to check this out, I think it's worth looking into.
Yeah, if, if you don't, you don't mind, I don't, I don't think there's any, at this point, any rush for this, but...
I mean, there's probably no work happening in the next two weeks anyway.
Right. We could, we could take that off.
I don't know what your schedule was for planting. I don't think it's starting till April. I don't know. Who's on, who's the Shade Tree rep?
That's me.
Oh. So, we don't know when they're, they were planning to start. So, you want to just pull it off, and we'll save it for the next meeting, Anthony?
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah.
I also had a question about 105, just a quick one, if that's okay, Mary Jean.
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming that this 125-780 that we're being refunded is the actual cost of what this is, is, there's, there's no plus or minus cost to the borough here. This is an actual one-for-one refund, is the cost to, to refund?
That's my understanding, Chad.
Christine, you want to take that one?
This came up in our public purse, didn't it?
Yep.
Was this the one that, um...
This is the Jersey...
The county is just giving us the money for us to pave and the cost to pave what...
New Jersey American Water, not the county, but yeah.
Right, so the utility is taking the, putting the onus on us to pave the roads instead of them trying to do it, and they're giving us the money to do so, and then, you know, it's essentially them paving the road or paying for us to do it.
Yeah, I mean...
Sorry, Gina, go ahead.
Go ahead, Tom.
Oh, you go ahead, Gina.
I, I was just going to say, I mean, it's not necessarily a one-for-one, but it's fairly close. They, they were giving us, we had negotiated a certain amount, and then they came back and lowered it because they gave us the Baskin Ridge portion of the road as well. So, when they came back, it's, it's fairly close, but it was, it's our decision to use our contractor rather than the New Jersey American Waters contractor.
Okay.
Right, and I think John's, the general feeling was that we could accomplish what would be a good quality pave with less than this. So, we might end up making a little bit of money, but he's not 100% sure of that.
Well, that, I mean, that's the question. Does this also have to go out for bid like another road, or is this...
No, they were going to use the co-op, but that was initially, Christine, that was the initial understanding before they came back and lowered the amount because of the, what was on the roads already. So, it, it might, it actually was a little bit lower than what it was anticipated, but it's fairly close. It's like, it's pretty much there, but we might end up having to pay a little bit, but it's like, a little bit would be give or take a couple thousand dollars, nothing.
All right, thank you, Gina. All right, I have no more questions.
Okay. Someone like to move 2098 through 2110?
I'll move it.
Not including 2107, correct?
Right, we're taking that off. Right, thank you.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay. Now, 2111, Jeff, you wanted to pull that off.
Well, my concern was, just to discuss it, is if we engage this contract for snack bar at the pool, and for some reason, because of the virus, the pool does not open this summer, are we on the hook for a cancellation penalty?
I think not, because there'd be impossibility of performance.
I'm sorry, what, can you say that again?
There'd be impossibility of performance, which would excuse us from having to pay him.
Right, but I mean, we'd probably give him back his $500. Is that it?
Yes.
Right.
When, when does he actually pay us?
It varies, Mayor. I believe there is a deadline in the contract to pay it, and I think he gets right to that deadline. I don't recall the date.
May 15.
Yes, May 15.
Okay.
Okay. So, we should, yeah.
When is our, our deadline, or our self-imposed deadline for making a decision about opening the pool? Or do we have one? Have we discussed that?
Why don't we, why don't we add to, I'm sorry, Jeff, why don't we add to paragraph, numbered paragraph one of the resolution, subject to a pool opening this season?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
I think that makes sense, but what if the pool opens for half the season?
Well, can we renegotiate the price if we don't have a full season?
Should we just prorate, should we just...
Prorate it? Yes.
Okay.
Can we have, can we have prorated language in there, Jack?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we just make it, which, oh, here it is. Yeah, why don't we just make it $500 to be prorated on the percentage of the season that the pool is open?
I think that makes sense.
Me too.
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, when the Breck Committee last met, it was well before, you know, this, the COVID-19 got escalated, so none of these topics were discussed then. And there's not another meeting for another couple of weeks unless it's deemed that we need one sooner, and then we can go back and ask.
Okay. So, Jack, you make those changes?
Yes.
So, now we need someone to move it. A second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Mara?
Yes.
Okay, reports. We have Jack's report, Public Safety Committee.
Yes, we met on the 18th, I think it was. And as you can imagine, our, the topic of conversation was related to the coronavirus, and actually, much of what we discussed is now moot point as things have moved on. The one thing that is important was the request by, by the chief Valentine to try and promote getting more volunteers to assist, to promote people to join the CERT team, for example, to, for example, require people to deliver food or things of that nature. The question came up as to whether there could be a borough employee that could help coordinate volunteer efforts.
Do you think we could do the CERT training via this type of meeting too? Like, maybe the chief would train people. Everybody's home doing nothing. They can all be CERT trained right now.
Well, my understanding is that we could do that part of it, the didactic part, but that does require a, an exercise. I'll defer to the chief, though.
You want to unlock him, unmute? Is he there?
I'll unmute him right now, if he is muted. I think he's, I think he's...
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you, Kevin.
Sorry, it's taken me about a half hour to get this to work. It worked fine on the test flight, and I've been here. I can see you, but I can't talk to you, and I couldn't hear everything you were all saying, but we're good now. Now, the CERT curriculum is something that we have to, you know, follow pretty closely, but they recently came out with a new online version of the CERT training that's supposed to be designed for people who live in remote areas and couldn't facilitate the classroom training. It might be a good substitute, but quite honest, honestly, they just recently released it right before all this broke loose, so I don't have any details on that. And as far as facilitating your training virtually over the, over the internet at this time is not going to work. We do not have the time to do a CERT class right now while this is going on, but we can use volunteers that are not necessarily CERT trained. They don't have to be part of the CERT team to use volunteers in response to our COVID-19 response that we're doing now.
So, Chief, if folks want to volunteer, where do they, how do they go about doing that?
So, we did put something out in our press release with our emergency declaration. We put a little bit in there about the volunteer needs that we might anticipate. The easy answer is if they send an email to EOC@burnardsvillepd.org, we will get that, and we will forward that to, or a CERT, or a volunteer coordinator. I've talked to Cheryl Ferranti, who's already a member of our CERT team and obviously a borough employee who's offered to help, and for now, she's going to try to coordinate the volunteers. What we need to do really is find out who's interested in volunteering, gather their contact information, and create a list, and then identify what type of volunteer service they might want to do. We do have a list of some anticipated needs that we think will be coming up, but whether or not we end up really needing them or having to use them right now is yet to be seen. So, we're really in that organization stage and identifying how, what our volunteer assets are right now. So, today I had a long talk with Cheryl Ferranti. She's on top of that. We've also already talked with Beth Sciano, the priest at St. Bernard's, and she's organizing the faith-based organizations in town. We have three that are actively working with her right now. They've been, Beth has been put in contact with Cheryl, so what our plans are there is we will partner with the faith-based organizations. They will not be part of the Burnsville OEM, but they will be working in cooperation with us at our direction, doing what we feel their volunteers would be the best served doing, whether it be delivering meal, delivering meals, picking up essential items, pharmaceuticals, over-the-counter drugs, doing doorstep deliveries of, of meals. If the mass feeding plan that the county is looking at is ever enacted, if we have a large number of shut-ins or AFN residents who need assistance, we would be prepared to hopefully, with some existing borough resources as well, be able to facilitate some of those needs. So, short answer is Cheryl's working on it. We did put out a press release. We certainly can use the help from the council to push it out any way, shape, or form that you can, that we are interested in identifying volunteers. If they contact Cheryl Ferranti via her email, or if they email EOC@burnardsvillepd.org, you know, we can get back to them. We can start to compile this list.
So, somebody should check with the JIF too, or with our risk manager. As I recall, we had a group in the past of volunteers, and the risk manager and the JIF required us to have some kind of formal recognition. You know, it didn't have to be an actual committee, but I think...
Correct, so...
...just the names, and, you know, like I said, some kind of formal, semi-formal.
I think also, in this particular case, particularly if we're going to have people delivering food, how are we going to screen them? Are we going to ask those volunteers to take a temperature every day to make sure that they're not carriers? And, you know, and they're, because those are delivering food to shut-ins.
You know, these are all good questions, but as I said, right now, we're just in the identifying stages at this point. We're trying to identify what resources we may have. We may not have anybody who's willing to help. You know, let's see who's interested and what kind of work they're interested in doing, and that'll give us time we can tackle some of those answers. As far as the JIF goes, you know, we do have our CERT team who's already there. We have a group of OEM volunteers. What's that?
The CERT is covered, isn't it?
Yeah, we have OEM volunteers who are covered, and then we always have those spontaneous volunteers. So, by organizing a coordinator, once we develop that list, you can, we can recognize them by resolution. And I don't know, Jack, if we really need a resolution, as long as there's, from what I recall with Hurricane Sandy, you know, someone can't just walk off the street and do something and say they're working for the borough. They have to be officially in some way or some capacity recognized by us. So, by us formulating this spreadsheet and having Cheryl organize that, we can start to, you know, look at these volunteers, and then we can start to, you know, compile that list. And as long as, you know, that list is approved by us, I think, I think that covers it. They're not, they're not spontaneous.
I'm just guessing it was run by the JIF, because those people are going to want to be insured by the borough and not have their homeowners.
The other question is that, you know... The other question, Ralph, you could address this too, unless, Kevin, you've already, Chief, you've already thought about it, but Cheryl's going to retire in a week. Who's our backup, unless she's going to extend her tenure?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't, you know, look, there haven't been a lot of borough employees around last week for me to even know who's going to be here going forward. So I really wasn't in a position to start to pick people who might be good for this. I mean, Cheryl's been here, I've been in contact with her most every day.
Cheryl doesn't need to be an employee to work on the CERT team, does she?
No, no, she doesn't. So what I did is I, you know, worked this out with her now, knowing that in a week, she's still on payroll, from what I understand, and she's offered to volunteer. When she goes on her leave and on her sabbatical, she's already a volunteer member of the CERT team. She's participated on her own time as a borough employee in the past, and it would just be a continuation of that, and she's agreed to take on that responsibility right now. The problem comes in is once her official retirement date kicks in, there is a mandatory separation from the borough, where her, you know, her pension requires a mandatory, I think, 30-day separation from the borough before she can have any affiliation with the borough.
But does that really impact CERT, though, Kevin?
Any affiliation with the borough whatsoever. We have to try to find out. I heard that there was some legislation pending that was supposed to exempt certain volunteers, such as emergency response volunteers, police, or not police, but fire and first aid. But I don't know if that legislation ever passed. The pension rules were pretty rigid, that you had to have a complete separation from the borough for a period of time before you could return.
All right, well, we have a little bit of a window to talk with Cheryl about that, I think, because she's got a number of weeks.
She's got months.
Well, that's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct, and I knew that today when I spoke with her, which is why I thought she would be really good at this, because she's one of our shelter coordinators. She's already organizing volunteers for the borough. She gets it, she knows the routine, and she's that kind of a person. She's a hard worker, a good volunteer, and a very outgoing personality. She's the perfect person for this position right now. So, her coordinating with Beth, who's organizing the, you know, the independent faith-based organizations who are not of the borough, we're just cooperating with them. They're volunteering, and we're managing and organizing our efforts in sync with them. We'll tell them what they need, and they'll go out, and they'll, you know, basically meet those needs on their own as a faith-based organization in the community. So that would be an unmet need that they would be covering, that, you know, we would know is covered, and we wouldn't have to get hands-in as far as handling out some of the day-to-day activities of that, if any of that even comes to be. Which, it still remains to be seen how volunteers might be used in this emergency. We have some foreshadowing and some planning that's being done that gives us an idea of where we might need some of these volunteers. We may have enough people with our CERT volunteers and are already registered OEM volunteers and the faith-based volunteers. We may not have to bring in any spontaneous volunteers, organize them, and use them, but we want a list. We don't even know what our resources are right now, what we will have available. So that's step one, is to get their, is to, you know, survey their interest and create that list. Once we have that list, and we know what potential resources we have, you know, then I can, you know, in the meantime, I'll reach out to the GIF. I know what they told me during Hurricane Sandy, but I kind of don't want to ask them right now, because I'm afraid that they're just going to say no. And we're in a position right now where we're not, we're really not ready to accept that, because our resources are pretty scarce. Depending on what happens, you know, I'd like to be able to use people in the community who want to volunteer to help us out, delivering meals. We're not going to put them in harm's way. We're not putting them in contact with anybody. We're not asking them to get personally involved with any of the people that they're going to be assisting. You know, they're going to be maybe manning a collection site, maybe picking up boxed meals from a pre-prepared or a pre-identified place where the meals are being prepared, delivering them to the curbside or doorstep of a resident who's pre-arranged on a list. They're not going to be out there really having any personal contact. They might be doing some telephone rings to check in some people who have registered with us as our special needs, to see if there's any, anything that they need or any assistance that they need. You know, they could even do some door knocks, and from a distance in the yard, they can talk to them, "Hey, are you okay? Do you need anything? Is there anything the borough can do for you? You're registered with us, we want to make sure you're okay." Things like that. We're not talking about anything that's really difficult right now, but we certainly have some very competent people who might be willing to volunteer in different ways. We've been through this before. We've done this with Hurricane Sandy, and we did this with another hurricane prior to that, when we used, when we organized spontaneous volunteers. And as long as the GIF said, as long as we were pre-identifying them, and they were working in some official capacity, they were of the borough, and it was okay. We just couldn't have people running around town doing things, saying, "We work for the borough." Does that make sense?
The question, yeah, that makes sense. So I have a question, then. You mentioned that people are registered with us, meaning they register that they have some sort of need.
Yes.
How do they do that? The same emails that you already mentioned? Or is there information on our website, which says, "If you're our community member and you need something, register here?"
Right, so if, on our SMART 911, SMART Prepare program that we have in the borough, there are two components to that. If you go to SMART911.com, you will, you register for the safety alerts. And then it asks you to complete a safety profile. And when you're in that safety profile, that's for the SMART, that's for the 911 operators. It does ask you some basic questions about disabilities and things like that, or needs. But then there's a whole nother section on that called SMART Prepare, that if you click on certain boxes, you go on, and it basically registers with us more information about you and people in your households who live at your address. So that's one way that we find out. The other way that we find out is through, we have a survey, it's called AFN Special Needs Survey. It's a downloadable form where people, because a lot of people aren't technical savvy and don't like filling this stuff in on the computer, they can fill out that form that asks basically questions about that, and they can submit that form to us either in handwriting, or they can email it to us, and we'll have that form, and we keep a log down here of those people. And we will then take that information, and we'll have that on file here. So we have those two things that we do internally here in Bernardsville. The third thing that's relatively new is a program that the state has called Register Ready. It duplicates in some aspects what we do with our SMART 911 SMART Prepare. They're similar systems, but they're different. They don't talk to one another, and the state pushes out Register Ready through their own marketing programs, their own campaigns, their preparedness programs on their websites and things like that. And they ask the towns to also market the Register Ready program. We think it's kind of confusing, but there are some good features to it that we like. So we also are involved in that, and we have SMART, we have Register Ready managers who go into the state database, and we can see if there's any Bernardsville residents that are registered in that system as well. So we have these three different avenues that we can identify our special needs people in the community. What we recently started talking about doing is taking the paper forms that we get back, and then manually here, entering that information into Register Ready, so it's in some kind of a computer database, and we have created like a third database. The challenge has been getting people to do this. Getting people to sign up to SMART 911 over the past three years has been very difficult. We've had more people sign up, I think, in the last week, when we were talking about it the other day, than we've had in the entire year. A very small percentage of the population are actually taking advantage of the SMART Prepare portion of it. We have more people that are signing up for the alerts, so.
So.
Go ahead.
So I was thinking that, you know, this particular situation, there may be people who don't have a defined disability that, because of an exposure to COVID-19, have to go into quarantine for two weeks, which is a responsible thing to do. So let's say we have a person who otherwise doesn't have any real documented need for anything, but they need to go into quarantine for two weeks. We don't want them to go into ShopRite or whatever. So, in those circumstances, those people might require one or two food deliveries, but they wouldn't necessarily be registered through this. Is that, is this something we want to make a consideration for, or do we want to have a?
Absolutely, absolutely, but I want to make sure that we have the resources to actually carry out the deliveries first, and have some kind of mechanism in place. Look, the first thing that they should be doing is relying on their friends and their families and their personal networks to make those food deliveries for them. But if, like you said, there's some people, you know, in the community may have other needs or may not have those connections in the community, they're going to have to rely on us, and the state has told us already that that's on us. So, there are things that they can do, and we do need to start pushing out some messaging on this. We haven't been to that phase. Look, we've just been trying to catch our breath. We're finally caught up a little bit, where we can start to push out some of these messages to the community. And if they could send us an email at this EOC@BernardsvillePD.org, that stands for Emergency Operating Center, that will get to the emergency management people who need to see it, and we can start to contact those people if we know that they're concerned about something. We can reach out to them, we can contact them and find out what their needs are. Or they can fill out one of those paper forms and send it in. We can get, you know, get that to them, and they can complete that. And it's, you know, there's some places in there where they can just handwrite what their needs are, and then we can assess it, but we'll reach out to everybody who has these concerns, and then we'll start to put them on that, on that list, and that'll help us to identify who those residents are that aren't normally registered in our programs.
Great, thank you.
Very good point, Chief.
All that sounds great, but I would still consult with the GIF, or our risk manager, I should say.
Well, so that goes to my question. Chief, I've seen a lot of local, local people through social media having ideas and wanting to reach out and help folks. If something could be coordinated by the general public to help folks in need, could the borough provide information from your department as to who needs what and what they need? Is that possible, or is that information confidential?
It would depend on what we're looking for. I think if it comes down to specific needs for specific people who have AFN or assistive needs, you know, it would have to be with their permission. Look, any nonprofit, any charitable organization or faith-based group can go out and initiate their own activities. I mean, that's great. What we would like and what we expect is that they will coordinate with us. So, we'll be working together, but they won't necessarily be working for us. We could let them know what the community needs are, and they could be establishing a way to do that. You know, we're still putting that together. I don't know if they're going to have enough people to meet some of the anticipated needs in the community without borough support. And this goes back to what Jack is saying. I think that's a great idea. I don't think that's bad to have someone coordinating that, but I don't know. If some volunteers are out doing something that we don't have registered with us, and we're providing them with information, and they're going out and acting on that, I don't know, Jack, are they of the borough?
Yeah, it seems to me that they're acting, that they're working through the church for okay. You know, that we could share information. I don't think that's too much involvement. But again, I'd ask the risk manager. Somebody should talk to Hallie and just ask her for some guidance.
Okay. All right, now, we can do that. And then, the only thing is, I'm working on the assumption that it's going to be the same as it was with the last times we've done this, and basically, I'm operating in that mode. Unless something has turned around and changed, which is possible, all we need to do is, in some way, formal capacity, develop a list. And that's exactly what we did with Sandy, when we had all these spontaneous people working in our shelters. The GIF was fine with it, as long as it was controlled through us.
Yes, I suspect you're right.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm just, you know, I'm just kind of operating on past experience here as far as that goes, but I'm certainly happy to ask her. But I'll be honest with you, every time I ask a GIF a question, there's 20 more questions that need to be answered. And I just hope that doesn't happen, because right now we're spread a little thin.
Okay, anything else, Jeff, on your report, or did we cover everything?
Well, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
So can I, can we leave it with a consensus at this point? That there's an understanding that Cheryl's going to be our volunteer coordinator right now, and we'll work to determine exactly what that program's going to look like. But right now, we're just collecting interest, and, you know, an interest survey of people who are willing to help, you know, with the OEM. And then we'll follow through with the GIF. How's that sound?
Yeah, is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone have a problem? No? Do we need, do we need to do anything formal to appoint her volunteer?
She's already been appointed, Mayor, by the emergency management coordinator. She's actually holding a position in the EOC as volunteer coordinator. So that's already been done. It's covered through the emergency declaration.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Finance, Tom?
So yes, at the request of borough staff, the finance committee pulled the budget off of this week's agenda. And Ralph, you may want to talk to the mechanicians of how this is going to work, but the state is likely to provide us with, what, additional guidance and some leeway in terms of the timing for submission of the budget. As such, we felt it would be wise for us to just pull everything back, take a look at all expense categories, take a look at all revenue categories, and see what might be impacted by these extreme circumstances of the current COVID crisis. So as a result, we're just buying ourselves a little bit of time to go back through everything, double and triple-check on things, and make estimates where we think revenues might be a shortfall or where there might be increased expenses. One of the things was already actioned tonight, was the change in the name for the Snow Removal Trust to the Storm Recovery Trust. That was one of the actions. But there may be further actions which are recommended, and we didn't want to go forward with the old budget, given that, you know, it may not change at all going forward, but at least gives us a chance to double, to take a double check with everything. So that's what we're going to do, and then we'll come back to everybody in the very near future. I don't know if we have a timeline yet, Ralph, for when we re-propose the budget?
Well, we're trying to, as you know, we're trying to put a finance committee meeting together this week at some point. And we'll go from there. You know, there's a couple of things we need to go over with you, and we'll go from there. But the state has been and will be very lenient as far as dates go. That's not going to be an issue.
Okay. So, that's basically, so we didn't have a finance committee meeting this week, but the plan is to then have a finance committee meeting as soon as possible, and then come back to the entire council with any changes, and we'll highlight exactly where revenues or expenses might change as a result of COVID-19.
Okay, thank you. Personnel?
Yes, the personnel committee had an ad hoc meeting today. As everyone can imagine, under the current situation, Ralph has taken the lead along with the chief on borough employee management. As was announced earlier, all borough employees currently are staying at home. However, as working under Ralph's management, they all have a work-from-home plan and daily work that they're supposed to get accomplished. And like I said, that's being managed by Ralph. As far as our part-time employees, there's been no decisions made, and we're going to have personnel meetings as we go forward through this crisis, as it changes every day, with a plan to at least, you know, figure some things out over the next week or two. But in regards to personnel, Ralph's in charge. In the current situation, he's working with the chief to make sure everything stays functioning as normal, as best as normal.
Thank you. Public Works, Christine?
Got it unmuted. Yeah, I got it. The Public Works meeting, we had a meeting over conference call, and the, the beginning of the meeting was a nice lengthy question-and-answer information session with Russ Olson from TrueGreen. So that was very informative, and we cleared up a lot of procedural things with him. So, the end result, which is great as far as we were concerned, is that basically what Russ, Russ Olson and his team have been doing for us is managing the fields in a very hands-on sort of way, which technically is within the definition of what integrated pest management is. Or at least, that was, you know, kind of the conclusion that we came to after talking to him specifically in great detail about every field. He's very knowledgeable about some of the problems that we faced in the past and that we continue to face, that are a result of the locations of the fields, the climate, and all that kind of stuff. So, stay tuned, please. When things calm down a little bit, we will come up with a more detailed, let's just say, description of how we manage our fields, so that the public and everyone kind of understands that, yes, in fact, we do use an integrated pest management approach. We don't use synthetic chemicals unless we feel that they're necessary. If there's an outbreak... If there's an outbreak of something, I guess last year it was a grub issue and it could potentially be this year, then we're not going to, you know, over treat in any, any field, which is great. And that's the way it's been happening for the past few years. So again, we'll come back with that at a later date. Hull and Lyndeberry, the work's going to begin on or about April 13th. We haven't had anything otherwise that, you know, would change that. But again, things are crazy now, so that's what we talked about. Lloyd Road, the contract was supposed to be awarded today. I'm not sure if that happened yet, so we'll report on that on the next meeting. Washington Corner Road bid is supposed to be released this week. There's also a bridge that we discussed at the last meeting, the last council meeting. And the Public Works Committee decided that the replacement of the Washington Corner Road Bridge will be aesthetically similar to the Lloyd Road Bridge or something close to that. So for any of you that, you know, are familiar with that bridge, it's, it fits with the character of the community. And so this bridge, the county is paying for it and they will be designing it similar to Lloyd Road Bridge. White Knack Road work is still supposed to start July of 2020. The Street and Roads Mill and pave funds, we're working on coming up with different ways to finance certain projects that, that, you know, that need to be done. So John and Doug and Jen, Gina, you can jump in if you want to, but I think they were going to come back to us with a more specific plan as far as which roads need what this year and next year. Other roads that are funded are Crestview, Carriage House and Pickle Brook. So those will be, you know, the ones next in the hopper, so to speak. There's some work being done on the dam that's at the pond and the pond culvert, which is causing that big puddling in the back near the train tracks that was completed. So we're hoping that that remedies that situation back there. Earlier this evening, we approved the change orders for the library roof. So without going into tremendous detail, the roof that is on there needs to be fixed because it's, it leaks quite a bit. And when we, when the contractors went to remove what's existing, they realized that something that we had hoped would be reusable is not. So that's why the change orders, it's an additional cost for that roof. There's some metal sheeting that we were going to reuse, but the way it was attached last time, they put screws in it and those screws, if we remove the, if we remove the sheet, it will damage the, what's underneath and we don't want to do that. So that's kind of the gist of that. I think that's pretty much it. Oh, and we're also beginning to engineer a path around the polo grounds, a nice walking path. And those seem to be pretty popular these days, walking paths. So hopefully that'll be up and running in the next couple of months and that'll be a good thing for the people to get some fresh air. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Next is the Land Use Committee, which is Tom, John and myself and our redevelopment attorney, Joe DiMarco. And we've had meetings with the contractors who put in RFPs as well as the Hampshire Group, just gathering information on who's still interested and what's doable. And we've been meeting with the redevelopment committee. So that's moving forward, even though most things aren't. The planners, Topology, are working on the redevelopment plan for Quimby and they've been getting input from the redevelopment committee. And they're also working on the redevelopment plan for what the former Audi dealership. So hopefully in the next month or so, we will have those plans to look at. A little distraction in the midst of chaos, but that, that's still moving forward because professionals are allowed to work, even though retailers have to close, lawyers, architects, they can still be working. So Topology was very happy to keep working on our project. Did John or Tom want to add anything? You good?
No, that covers it. I think you covered it.
Okay. All right. Next, let's see, we have housing and zoning. We have anything going on there other than what the report we got from Jeff Price?
Yeah, I don't see Jeff on today. So no, there's, there's nothing major there. And, and right now, you know, a lot of that activity has been suspended through.
They're not doing inspections and any, I don't know if we've had any committee meetings. Anybody have a liaison?
The Planning Board met.
I don't have any reports because we didn't have any meetings. Well, I think there was one that was done by phone. What are we directing the committees to do to continue their meetings but have them virtual? Is that our direction or are we telling them not to meet?
I think they're allowed to meet virtually. They just can't meet in Borough Hall so, or anywhere else to, you know, gathering. But if they want to have a virtual meeting, they're certainly welcome to do that. And Chris could probably help them set something up if they need that.
Yeah, so the Planning Board was, I think, the most recent. It was half virtual and half physical. It was just before the, the order came out, I think it was last week. And just know that the zoning ordinance is currently under review and there's a bit of a microcosm of the type of debate and discussion I'm sure we'll have at the council level. But I, I would report that that group is making really good progress to getting a, a good ordinance in front of this committee, hopefully very soon.
Is that the information from Common Ground? Is that those zoning?
Yeah, this is, this is the new zoning. So it goes over zoning approved uses and all of the other items. I believe it originated Common Ground, but it's, it's going through right now.
Yeah. So it's really, Ralph, are you okay with that? That it's, the committees can meet if they need online, but you know, a lot of them may not need to because they can't really, you know, enact and do things if they're not allowed to.
I personally urge the Planning Board to continue to meet this, this week because we have the sign ordinance and the zoning ordinance, which has implications that are near term that need to get done.
Yeah. I think the only issue with Planning Board is they probably can't accept any new applications because you, you can see plans and you can't really do that without the physical.
Yes.
Fortunately, I don't think we have any applications pending, so that's good.
So Mayor, this is Gina. We did, the, the Rec Committee did meet on March 10th. We met in person. There was talk about just painting the pool, the snack bar rental, which was a topic that was brought from council back again. And we assigned the integration pest management. We also talked about the pool rules and regulations being updated, but a lot of it, I guess, like we alluded to earlier, needs to kind of be looked at again in the light of where we are now.
Thank you.
That was it. And Board of Health was supposed to meet and it was the first day where we couldn't meet in person, so we are rescheduled now for Thursday. And there will be a conference call that Anthony already sent to the newspapers and will be on the website for people to call in if they want to.
Great, thank you. I see Jeff Price is on again. I don't know if anybody had questions for him.
Library Board met and we did have an issue that we wanted to bring before the council. I'd sent you an email. I don't know if you want me to handle that under new business or bring it up now, the issue related to the blood drive?
I think we said that that's really Kevin's decision, yes?
Well, he, he's, he's in agreement. I mean, as I understand it from his email, but I just want to make sure that anybody had any other questions, we could answer it because it is our, our building and we're responsible for it. If anybody had any concerns, I'd be happy to answer them.
What, what's the topic to be concerned about? Sorry?
At the library.
Yeah, they, so there's, there's decreasing blood donations going on in part because some people are afraid of coming forward and the other because there's a diminishing number of sites. They, they use a lot of schools and those are no longer available. So they, the American Red Cross approached us about using the community room for a blood drive. The way it would be structured is that people would only come in there one at a time to get their blood drawn. They would remain in their cars until they're ready to be called. That way we don't have people queuing up or getting within the six feet. The Red Cross would be responsible for cleaning before and after. Should there be any reason for decontamination, they would be responsible for that as well. And it would be limited to no more than 40 people.
I think if we need blood, we should think about it, yeah.
So the, the, the Board was, was in favor of it, but again, they wanted me to bring it before the council because of the library itself is, even though the community room is technically not part of the library, you know, it essentially is, they're, they're one and the same. And so they wanted us to bring it forward to you.
Dr. Hammond, I have a question.
Sure.
Who, who would facilitate this and organize this, coordinate this with the Red Cross? Would it be somebody from the library or would it be somebody from the borough?
The library.
So they would take care of?
Unless you had a request to do something differently.
No, no, because I heard the library was talking about leaving an empty space, like after the Red Cross was done, they wanted to wait like five or 10 days before they reutilized that space again. And I don't know if there's any medical validity to this so that any, any virus could die.
Well, actually that came from me. I don't know where the number five came. I told them that the literature, as I understood it, was that virus could conceivably live, well, I shouldn't use the word live because viruses aren't technically alive, but they could remain on plastic and stainless steel for up to three days. It's unclear whether they would be active in that time period, but I had suggested that it might be prudent not to use the space for three days after, after we used it for the blood drive.
So, so that's fine, but I'm wondering, you know, what their intentions of reopening are because when I was talking to Janet Murnack today, she had given me a date or target date at this point, which I understand is open-ended of April 14th. And I was under the impression that if they do this, you know, they'd be looking at being in here for an extended period of time. It's not like one or two days that they're going to come in and get out. I don't know if there's been a timeframe that's been delineated. I have no problem with this. I'm fully supportive of it.
Well, that was not what was presented to the, to the library board by the, by the American Red Cross. They told us that their plan was for a single day in the first week of April.
Okay, so they may, I may not have had all the information then. So maybe they were talking a little broader based on the timeframe that the day might be, but I was under the impression that they, they could be there for a little bit longer. All right, fine. Well, that's fine as long as, you know, I'm a hundred percent in favor and I think it's a very important cause and I think we should support them to the extent that we can. I don't think we'll need to use that room, but in the event that we do, you know, we would just have to ask them, if they're only going to be there one day, it's really not an issue. You know, so, okay, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Items of business, we have the path at Peters Tract for hunters. That was, I believe they were asking for, if the hunters could use a machine to clear the path. And, you know, I was up there the other day walking and the, what do you call those things? The, the barberries, barberries are already starting to come out and that makes it almost impossible for manual trail making. And if one of them volunteered to use his little machine there to help clear it and they wanted to make sure that was okay. And I guess, again, that's a Jiff question.
Yeah, I would make them sign a whole harmless and provide insurance coverage, naming the boroughs and additional insured.
Because they're part of the hunters group. You probably already have their insurance information.
Yeah, let's just make sure it covers that activity as opposed to just the hunting.
Yeah. Okay, I think that was, did Ed English give that to you, Anthony?
Yes, he did, yeah. I'll, I'll follow up with him. I'm pretty sure he knows about the insured, the whole harmless. I'll, I'll follow up with him to get that.
Okay. Because it is, it's really hard. I mean, they've made a decent, like a small path, but it's not very, you can't get too far before the, the barberry takes over. And it would be nice to have a path, another place for people to walk. Mayor's update, I don't have a whole lot because, well, you know, I've been home every night for a change instead of being at meetings and events. But we have been on a call with the county every day. We have a call in with all the other mayors, administrators and clerks. We do have three cases in Burnsville that have been confirmed. We just got that number today. So, which is part of the reason that I think 14 towns in the county have declared states of emergency. Overall, Somerset County, I believe, is still one of the lower counties for cases. And I have to say, I'm really, and I think Ralph will agree with me, they, I'm very impressed with the county's handling of all this. They've really taken control. They're on top of everything. They're keeping everything in following the proper channels so that everybody's information gets where it needs to go. And it's, it's, what's nice about these calls is all the other mayors and administrators are on the line and we've been getting some ideas from them, sharing who's doing what, what's going on in each of the towns, which has really been helpful. I think we've been a little ahead of the curve in getting our, our playgrounds and fields closed, which I think has been helpful. So yesterday, Sunday, was yesterday Sunday? I'm losing track here. We had a call with the governor's office and, you know, we're still waiting to hear what's going to come out of Congress on these aid bills for small businesses. We get a lot of questions from the small businesses. You know, a lot of support for our downtown restaurants. I know people have really been on Facebook talking about, you know, get, get takeouts, support our little, our local businesses. So I think they're all struggling downtown, so hopefully some of these aid packages will go through. I think that's all I had. I don't think we have any correspondence, do we?
Mayor, can I ask a question about that? Three known cases in Burnsville are confirmed. Is, do you know if the county's going through and the, and if people will be notified if they were in contact with some location and everything for those people?
Kevin, maybe you can, I believe the Board of Health does that. You know, they don't reveal to us who's, who the people are.
No, yeah, of course not.
But the, the Board of Health, I think, is, has the contact and they follow up with.
Yeah, they do, they do pretty extensive contact tracing and extensive interviewing to find contacts and then alert those people.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. And actually just to remind, when we are in a state of emergency, once we make that declaration, it's really the, it's not the police chief, it's the emergency management group is in charge.
That's right.
They take charge and Ralph is the, he and Ralph, so the chief and Ralph really now become the head of government during a state of emergency. So that's why I mentioned on the library thing, it's really, that's Kevin's final decision because now he is running the show at the moment in, as long as we're in a state of emergency. And all our, you know, anything that we want to send out or post on the website should go through, should be cleared through the emergency management office so that we're all being consistent and we know what's going on.
Yeah, but Mayor, there's somebody that has a question on the line.
I can unmute them if you want.
Yeah, we're, we're up to, I don't think we had anything unfinished and I don't know if we really want to get into new business right now. So let's go to the open session. Do you need to raise your hand so we know that somebody wants to say something? Somebody from the public want to speak? Just give us where you live.
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. My name is Colin Wyble. Hi, good evening. My name is Colin Wyble. My address for your records is twenty forty-five Lincoln Highway in Edison, New Jersey. I'm with a company called NGC Development, and we are the builders of the heritage at Clermont, which is in Bernardsville. Mayor and council first, I'd like to thank you all for your service during this difficult time. It's nice to join you for a virtual council meeting. My question tonight is about a week ago, we received a communication from the borough that you guys were suspending building inspections likely through the twenty-seventh. We're not looking for that to change or resume, but we're trying to plan from our own perspective, and I'm wondering if the borough can provide any guidance this evening as to your intentions to resume borough services, particularly in the building inspections department. And if if you're not able to provide any guidance, just where would be most appropriate for us or other builders in town to monitor that situation? Thank you.
Yeah, I can answer that question. Really, although the borough hires and pays the construction officials, you know, they really report to DCA. So I anticipate DCA will be issuing more guidelines as to what the construction officials and subcode officials have to do. They already issued one with respect to smoke detectors, but really they run the show and not the borough.
Thank you.
If I could say something, this is Jeff Price. I've had a number of emails and phone calls about the same subject. And what I've done is pass them on to Terry in in construction, and she's filtering them through our construction official. And I'm not sure what's coming out the other end, but I don't have any repeat emails from anybody.
So you're still open for phone calls and emails if people have questions?
Yes, yeah, that's right. So I told Terry, please have them send me an email, and I'll see what's going on and see if I can get something done for them.
Mayor, I'd just like to let the council know also that I'm I'm in contact with Jeff every day. And and we were just discussing this particular situation this afternoon. So I've asked him to reach out to Len and make sure that we are up to date with any DCA regulation changes or modifications to to that so that we can, if we can get free and 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 help with inspections, we'll we'll do so. We don't want to hold really any emergency or any stressful situation up if we if we can, if we don't have to.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, thanks for your question. Anyone else have, if you look on the participant list and click raise hand, we'll know that you want to talk. That was the only one I see. Let me see another one. Nope. Okay, no one else in the public wants to speak? Close the public session.
Mayor, I just have one comment I wanted to make, and I think the meeting has gone relatively smoothly, and it seems to me that the IT department, Chris Tomato specifically, has done a really good job in helping us transition during the last week, ten days. And that, you know, I'm quite impressed with how well this has gone. And, you know, the, as far as I can tell, having the borough numbers forwarded to people when they're working remotely, it seems to be working pretty well. From my perspective, anyway, I just wanted to say thank you.
Second. It's Mayor, it's Kevin. I'd like to say something if I can. So I wasn't, it's kind of hard to follow to see exactly when I can jump in here to say a few things, so I guess we're at the end of the public session, so now is as good a time as any. I'd like to backtrack a little bit to your report, Mayor, where you had indicated that, you know, under a state of emergency that, you know, the the game show is really being run by the emergency management coordinator, Ralph, and that's true. But by no means do I want you to feel that the Borough Council doesn't have a very, very important role to play in this matter. And ultimately, you know, as the council, you're still responsible for the operations of the borough and ensuring that the public safety needs of the community are are met in order the direction of the Office of Emergency Management. So really, what I what I'd like to say is we we need your support and and we need your help. And there's a few things that you can do, and, you know, we try to push this out through our social media and through our website. I am in contact with Dr. Hammond, you know, pretty much on a daily basis about what our needs are and what's going on. But I don't have daily direct contact with everybody in the council. It's just not not feasible. And Mayor, I do have contact with you as well. But what I'd like to do is just emphasize the importance of everybody in our community abiding by and following the governor's executive orders that are out there. This is a very, very serious matter. And, you know, while most of the borough seems to be complying with most of the provisions of the executive order, I think there are those people that that push it to the limits. There have been times when our basketball courts have been crowded, or tennis courts at the pool or at up near the pool have had a lot of activity on them. The playgrounds, people have not been heating the closure of the playgrounds and jumping fences. You know, the police department, we don't want to be chasing a lot of kids and people around who are trying to get out because they're they're going a little stir crazy. It's really incumbent upon responsible members of our community, the parents and the people who live here, to take these orders seriously. The Attorney General today, you know, basically said in no uncertain terms, the time for warnings is over, and he expects law enforcement agencies to go out there and enforce these orders. It's a lot easier for him to say when he's sitting in Trenton, I understand the purpose of it, and I understand the emphasis that he's putting on it. But what we really, really need to do is solicit the cooperation of the people in our community. They should not be leaving their homes for any other reason than to go out for any of the essential purposes that are listed in Order one oh seven. They should not be going to any businesses that are not essential businesses that have come up with some creative ways to provide curbside services while they say that the businesses are closed. They're really not abiding by the details or the orders of Executive Order one oh seven by saying, well, we'll do curbside delivery. If they're not, if they're not an essential business, they're not supposed to be open, period. So if the council can help me, you know, as you learn of these provisions in these orders and, you know, you go on the county freeholder meetings, we sit in on those too. We listen to what's being said so we don't miss anything. You know, there's a lot of things that you can emphasize by pushing out back to the community through your social media channels, through your email list, distribution list that you may have. As long as you're pushing the the message that's consistent with what the state is asking, what OEM is asking, your your involvement in that is crucial to getting the word out to the community as to what they should be doing. With regards to the parks, I'd like some guidance from you. I know that the parks are closed and our playgrounds and facilities are closed. But, you know, there's been some gray area about what what they can be used for as far as passive recreation goes. And that creates a little bit of confusion, I think, in the minds of some people as to exactly what that is. In my mind, it's walking, running, hiking, jogging, biking. Nothing that involves any contact, nothing that involves any group activities, people passing through, maybe walking their dogs, those types of things. But, you know, a football game, a pickup football game of, you know, a group of people is, I don't believe, appropriate. So I think it's appropriate to say the fields are closed to any activities other than passive recreation, which include walking, hiking, biking, that kind of a thing. Does that make sense to you? I want to make sure that we're on the same page.
Yeah, and I think that's what we said when we first announced it was if no organized games or sports were to be played, and then I'm not sure about tennis courts. People argue over the tennis courts. But you're touching the ball, you know, the same ball back and.
Well, that's, but the point is, is that the school has already ordered those closed, and somebody with keys is getting in there and opening them up.
Well, the ones over by the pool have been busy too. I've seen people playing.
What's your relationship in terms of your authority with the the school district? Can you order them, for example, to take the the tennis nets down?
Well, that that was going to be my next point. They they were sending their staff up there today to change the locks on the tennis courts because somebody who had a key was opening them up, and there were obviously tennis lessons that were being run up there. I'm not exactly sure who was doing it. At some time, there were a considerable number of people in those courts. The courts are closed and it's supposed to be locked. At one point, there were people in there playing tennis, and the gates were closed behind them, and the chain was wrapped around the door. So whoever went in locked themselves in, was playing tennis. So they can get pretty creative, but taking the tennis nets down, I think, is an excellent idea. And I was going to suggest, you know, our basketball courts as well, that some towns have gone so far to take the hoops down.
Well, that was my next suggestion. It was if you take the hoops down and you take the tennis nets down, and by the way, I, as I was walking my dog about two or three days ago, I watched kids on the high school field playing soccer. If we remove nets and things like that, it makes it a lot harder for them to do what they're doing.
I I agree, and, you know, I talked, I tried to talk to Dr. Dempsey about it today. She was a little difficult to get ahold of. I did talk to her briefly yesterday, and I put a call on her today, but I hadn't had a chance to follow up with her, but they said that her crew was out there today tightening things up. But I think we need to do the same thing. You know, those basketball courts are wide open, and if there's no hoops, there's no, there's no basketball. Some towns have removed the hoops. Some towns have put.
The question, does your authority in in under the emergency order extend to the school district? So we don't leave the option up to them to decide what actions they're going to take. We tell them, you tell them what actions to take.
I can do that, but I can't order their personnel to do anything. I mean, they don't work for me. They work for the school district, just like the borough employees work for the borough. I can't order the recreation to come out and take the hoops down when they're not working on that day.
Right, but you could, but you could order the school district to remove the the tennis nets if they continue to be abused.
I know, Jack, I'm going to.
I think for physical facilities like that, you probably could, you couldn't order to do anything with respect to the operation and management of the schools, but I think physical facilities that are open to residents of the borough, you have that authority.
Okay, no, I mean, and I'm sure they'll be a hundred percent cooperative too. That's that's not the point. I think, I think what I'm, what I'm really trying to say is, you know, that if you can get the message out, please abide by these rules there for the the general health and safety of the community. If you're operating a business that's a nonessential business and you've come up with a creative way to stay in business, you're probably in violation of Executive Order one oh seven. They should be closed, and, you know, and people should not be out of their houses, and they need to be taking this seriously. I'm not, you know, I'm not talking about people going for a walk, going for a run, riding their bike. You know, people need to get out and do those kinds of kinds of things. But when you see large groups of people congregating and then kids start playing together while parents are chatting and things like that, we really need to reinforce, you know, in a in a friendly but kind of parental way, please, you know, don't do this. This is wrong. You can't do this. And and we can't do this alone. The police department can't do this alone. So if if we're all on the same page and you understand, those are the types of things that you can be really, really helpful.
I think what might be helpful to have like a do's and don'ts list for recreation in the borough. You know, don't use our playground, but do go for a walk or, you know, maybe have a do's and don'ts list that would allow people to see what we're suggesting that they do, so it's not all don't do anything, but but maybe what's safe versus what's not recommended.
I think that's a great idea, Tom. Would you like to put that together for us?
Yeah, I can do it.
I'm I'm serious because that that's that's exactly the kind of support that we need.
Yeah.
Obviously, you don't have the time to sit down and create those do and don't lists.
But I I think I'll make up the list. I'll run it past you, and then you can decide if it fits with, you know, whatever the the goals are for, you know, the police department.
That's that's a big help. Well, it's the OEM, but, you know, in fairness to the people, you know, in the community, I'd like them to know too exactly what's expected of them. And if we make these these messages clear, maybe we'll get a little bit more compliance because some people get very upset when they see other people not following the rules, so to speak, and, you know, you start to hear about this, and it's not, you know.
And the longer this goes on, the more controversial it's going to get, you know?
Exactly. Hopefully, it won't go on that long, but I think we need to be prepared to at least send the send a clear message out there. So that would be helpful if we could do things like remove the nets, remove the hoops. And I could talk to Dr. Dempsey about having the athletic equipment moved off the field, and I think we need better signage. We've put barricades up at the parking lot next to Cine Drive, and people have removed them already by the basketball courts. They keep pushing, pulling them off to the side. So, you know, things like that, they just have to cooperate with us, and if they're closed, closed means closed. And they they need to cooperate and keep people off of these fields and out of these areas. So that would be really helpful if you could do that. The other thing.
Can you wrap the basketball nets or the playgrounds with yellow police tape?
I can, but I can guarantee you that it won't last long.
Actually, they are. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
I would think that we should order some signs from the print shop to actually say that the fields are closed and why, and get them in, you know, if we need to get them in Spanish too, that would be useful because the caution tape, I mean, that doesn't really send the right message, it doesn't really say that it's closed. It's just caution tape that you can, a kid is going to just tear it down if they're not supervised.
We absolutely need better signage.
We should get some signs printed.
There's been some signs that have put out there. I think better signage is 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 a step in the right direction, but these are the kinds of things. Who should I coordinate this with? I mean, the police department doesn't have the staff, you know, right now to be able to go out there and do, you know, field maintenance, put up signs, you know. We're doing a lot of that now as it is. Is there someone that can take charge of that responsibility? And who would that be? And I'm sure Ralph could probably discuss this with me, and we can do it as long as we're on the on the same page that this is the direction that we should be heading in.
Kevin?
Ralph, you're Ralph, you're on mute.
Oh, I was gonna say, Kevin, I think, though, you know, it should go through Ralph.
Okay.
So that he's kind of the point person, so we're not all off doing different things, that he should know.
Okay, sorry about being muted there. I just was getting involved listening. Kev, I I'd be happy to get our B and G people together to to take care of these things as long as the council. If I'm understanding, you're okay with us taking the the baskets down, not the the hoops down, not backboards. Take the hoops down, and we're going to get with the school to take care of the the tennis courts. Some additional signage for closures, and let's see, what else?
We can provide tape, Ralph, that they can put up around around this, some barricades perhaps at some of the entrance to these facilities with the signs on them, those types of things.
Fine, I'll 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 speak to John McDowell tomorrow morning, and we'll we'll get this in motion.
No, I appreciate that, but I, you know, I didn't want to step on recreation's toes. I didn't want to make it seem like if there were certain uses that were being permitted, that the police department was shutting it down. I just want everybody to be on the same page.
Right, no, I I can tell you, you know, before we 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 shut down, that Cheryl and I and Neil were working. We we felt we were headed towards this, so we were working with that, and there was to be no act, there was never an intent to have any activity there that was condoned by the borough. That I can tell you.
No, I understand that, but it's people will do when no one's looking, you know, it's what people do when nobody's looking, so we need to convey that message when we're not on top of that. The other thing I wanted to convey to to the members of council is, you know, as we start to develop an idea of what our anticipated needs will be, you know, I I communicate with Dr. Hammond pretty much on a daily basis as the head of the Public Safety Committee, and he's been a great resource and very supportive of our efforts. You know, I'd like to use him to push out information to the council so that you're more in tune to maybe some of the needs as they arise. You know, rather than me having to get ahold of everyone directly or entertain you individually, you know, I'll go through Dr. Hammond if that's okay with you as far as, you know, conveying messages out to the council as to what our needs are and things like that as we go through this, work our way through this emergency. And I I just want to let you know, you know, on a daily basis, we're we've been working probably fourteen to sixteen hour days for the last seven days in a row on this. I know it doesn't look like there's a lot going on in town, but, you know, Mayor, as you're aware of from the county meetings, and Ralph, I know you're on the other, on some of them too. There's an awful lot of stuff going on, and there's an awful lot of coordination that's taking place. And we have to coordinate with the local health department, county health department, and the state health department. We're coordinating with the county OEM, we're coordinating with the state OEM. We're coordinating with multitudes of different various different agencies at different levels. We attend CompStat meetings every day virtually with the state police. We attend, we we were involved in two conference calls a week with the County of Emergency Management. And we're also listening in on the county freeholder meetings so that we don't miss anything because sometimes there's stuff that's discussed there that we're not hearing anywhere else, so we're on top of the information. Providing daily situation reports to the county to get passed up to the state. We have, you know, we're ICS and NIMs compliant so that when we go for our federal funding, which has been authorized, Ralph, I did send you something on the types of expenses and costs that we're incurring and, you know, some of the guidelines for reimbursement that we can look forward to at the end of all of this. We have to make sure that we're we're doing all of this properly, we're keeping the proper records, and we're prepared when the time comes to submit the application for emergency protective measures and grant funding to deal with those costs. So there's there's an awful lot of coordination that's going on behind the scene. And quite simply, just sorting through some of the executive orders and any administrative orders that you don't see all of them or associated with some of these executive orders that clarify a lot of the the details that are in the executive orders as to what that really means to us. that clarify a lot of the, the details that are in the executive orders as to what that really means to us. Two or three times a week, we're in a conference call with the Attorney General. A lot of times, you know, we're told, we're given guidance and told that there will be more guidance forthcoming. And then before the guidance comes, the rules change, and something that was in effect yesterday is no longer in effect today. So it's constantly changing. This is a very dynamic situation. We learn something new every day. Lucy at the Burners Township Health Department is doing an incredible job with her slim resources that she has dealing with all of the towns. I'm in contact with, with Len, who's the director of the Board of Health. I try to, the health, yeah, the Board of Health for Burnersville, to keep him in the loop of what's going on. So if he has any concerns or needs, he can get back to me. You know, Ralph and Mayor, I think you're on a distribution group from the EOC. When we start to send out pertinent communications now, Chris Tomato and myself. Today, we just tightened up that list so that you'll be seeing some stuff that, it's more for your information. So you're aware of everything that's going on. And if you have any questions, you can reach out to me. Because as I said, you know, we have, you know, three or four people basically working on this full-time for most of the day. We have employed, brought in some part-time assistants to do some things that the state and the county have been asking us to do. We can't do it all. We do have employees at the police department that are available to help us with that. But again, the good news is, we'll be, we'll be getting some FEMA funding and reimbursement for a lot of those expenses. We've been in close coordination with the fire department every single day, the health department every single day. And I think we're as prepared as we possibly can be to move forward to meet the challenges that are, that are ahead of us. But we do need to keep in close communication. We do need to be supportive of one another. And I'm not immune to your concerns. If you have, if you have a question, if you have something, please shoot me an email. If I can't get back to you right away, I will get back to you as soon as possible with an answer. Because I am not gonna be afraid to pick up my keyboard and shoot you an email if I need something out, ask, you know, for some support or something. Going forward, for the Personnel Committee, and Ralph will work through this, but we have a lot of questions from the employees about various procedural issues regarding this that I think we need to clarify for some of our employees, but we'll do that at the appropriate time. We are looking for some guidance. Obviously, the GIF needs to weigh in on some of this. Our managed care provider needs to weigh in on some of this should one of our employees become ill. We need to know how we're going to handle that, absentee policies, payment policies, procedures that you want us to follow. This hit us all on the head, you know, very quickly, like a ton of bricks. And, you know, we've all been trying to catch our breath ever since. But as we move forward, we really need to solidify some of this and put some of these policies in place so that, you know, we can give our employees some answers. Just so you know, in the police department, we are taking steps that we will be enacting this week to maximize the call for social distancing and minimize unnecessary employee contact. Administrative staff now will be pretty much working completely from home remotely, even though we rely heavily on them to do a lot here. We've, we've tried to prioritize the work that they're doing so that the most important stuff can be done at home with them making infrequent trips to the police department to gather certain files and records that are not available electronically. We'll be working through that with them. As far as our sworn officers go, we do have a request into the Police Training Commission to waive our SLEO 3s, who are the school resource officers, the school safety officers, to the position of SLEO 2. Basically, what that does is it empowers them with police powers off of school grounds. They're fully certified police officers. They're all, they're all experienced retired law enforcement officers. But they will be a reserve corps for us in the event that some of our officers do become ill, if we have quarantine issues or isolation issues that are, you know, hampering our efforts. We can activate those two officers as regular police officers. We have two additional part-time police officers who are special law enforcement officers too, who may, who may be available to help us from time to time. We fully expect that they will step up and fill in some of the gaps. And we're doing some dynamic scheduling right now where we're actually going to be pulling certain people out of, out of squads and basically putting them on an on-call status where they're not actually reporting to work, where they could possibly have contact or spread any illness that we're not aware of, and infect the entire police department so that one day we wake up without a police department. So we're staggering our shifts, we're limiting contact. The things that we're doing are not unique in any way. Many area agencies are doing exactly the same things. And we feel that we have a responsibility to our employees and the safety of the people in the community to maybe, to be able to ensure that we're in a viable position to be able to, you know, provide public safety assets to the, to the community. As far as that goes, the fire department and first aid squad are on top of everything. You know, we're working very closely with Atlantic Ambulance and our volunteers to make sure that all of the medical calls that come in for assistance are answered. We will come in. It came to my attention today that in surrounding towns, recently, there's been an issue identified and throughout the county, that some people are actually lying to the 911 dispatchers about their symptoms because they feel that a positive answer to some of the questions that are being asked on screening by the 911 dispatcher will result in an ambulance not coming because they may have a possible coronavirus illness. That's not the case. Those questions are being asked for the purpose of screening the call so that the first responders can be advised to take the appropriate protective, personal protective measures upon responding to that call. Dawning PPE equipment, as it's called, personal protective equipment, is our first line of defense to keep us safe and healthy, to be able to help the community when they call. So it's very important for people to realize that we will respond. You know, we, the police will get involved if there's a critical situation. We had a difficulty breathing call today where our officers were hands-on. They dawned their PPE, and they did what they had to do. They're not backing off. But if the call is one where we don't have to get personally involved or have close personal contact with the patient, we're not going to do that because it puts us at risk and it puts other people at risk. We're gonna stand back and we'll take action that's needed, you know, when there's a life-threatening illness or a life-threatening condition that we have to be involved with. But we're here. The fire department and first aid squad are here. They're dedicated, and they're ready and waiting to help. And, you know, as long as we have the resources and the equipment, and we're okay with that right now. But we, you know, we don't have it forever, but, you know, we do need to secure some more PPE for our first responders. We're working on that. But we're here, and we will be responding to calls for service. So I just wanted you aware of some of the actions that we were taking. There's an awful lot going on. It's very hard for me to quantify to you exactly how this works, but there's a lot of moving parts. We're here for you. We hope that you're here for us. And if you need anything, please feel free to reach out to me. We're just an email or a phone call away.
Thank you.
Chief, I have a quick question. So in order to have your staggered shift and to make sure that you have a cohort of officers who are at home and therefore not potentially exposed, are you using the fifth squad to do that? Or are you cutting your squads from?
No, it's not really the fifth squad. It, it, the way we're breaking up our squads, I don't, it's gonna be hard for me to get into the details of this, but what we're doing is we're, we are creating a reserve squad, so to speak. It's not the fifth squad. The fifth squad that we have right now is completely consumed in EOC operations. They're all being used. That's the people who are trained, specially trained to do our emergency management jobs and our emergency management functions during time of crisis. So we're not tucking them away anywhere. They're out in the, they're out in the forefront of this whole, this whole thing. But we're basically redesigning our staffing in a way that creates a reserve officers that are not necessarily here every day, where they're being exposed or can expose other officers so that if we do have an illness, we have people that we can call on. And we're gonna rotate our officers through those assignments in a fair and equitable manner as best we can. But, you know, and we're not, they're all subject to recall if they're needed at any time. So, you know, they're, they're aware of that as well.
Hey, thanks, Kevin, for that. And I guess we're gonna go into closed session at this point? Can we do that?
Yes, we do. I do.
You do what? You have some stuff? And we don't need to come back out, or not?
No.
No, okay.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Just, Jack, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this with people on. Did we lose our, did we lose Chris? How do we, how are we gonna do this?
Yeah, if we can just ask all non.
Non-county members.
Non-county people to drop off the line, please.
Okay, I'm leaving the meeting. Thank you. Most informative.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
Mayor, do you have anything for me in closed session, or are we good?
No.
No, I think we're good.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
Thank you.
Somebody should monitor the participants list.
Yeah, I've got it in front, I've got it in front of me, Jack.
Yeah, and do we have to motion to go into closed session?
Yes, we have to do our usual.
Okay. I'll move to go into executive session.
Second.
And we still have two folks on the, one person on the line.
They're just dropping down.
Anthony is.
I think I can remove people from the list, so I might do that right now.
Yeah, Anthony, I think you might be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that right now.
I think the only person on it is Mr. Zavalek.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna remove, I'm gonna remove. Do you want to remove? Will not be able to rejoin the meeting. Okay, there you go.
There you go.
Okay.
Kick him out.
Now I think, okay, let's see who we got here. We got me, Chad, Jeff, Tom, Mayor, Jack, Ralph, Gina, John, Christine. I'm gonna go to more, and I'm gonna lock the meeting. I think if I, and then didn't Chris say if we lock the meeting, that nobody can come in?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm gonna do, I'll do that, and hopefully that won't mess anything up, but.
And we can stop the recording as well, right? We should?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. That's what we do.
No new attendees can join this meeting once locked. I'm gonna say yes right now.
Great.
Okay. And pause, stop, it says pause, stop, record, I'm gonna hit stop. You, do you wanna stop?